Roll call, please.
Councilmember Blackwell.
Here.
Chipman, here. Von Breghorst, here. Hopkins.
Here.
Here. Okay. Reverend Solander wasn't able to join us tonight, so please stand for the Pledge of Legions. Natasha will lead us.
I.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any commission reports?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me now that I... Yes, I am reporting on the library. This... One of the coolest things that recently happened was Timber applied for a grant from the Lorr Foundation and received ten laptops with a charging cart, and so those will be used by many patrons of the library. And there's some remaining funds from that grant that will go towards summer reading and summer movie nights. So that program is getting ready to gear up. During the past month, four thousand and sixty-four books were checked out, seventeen new cards were issued, thirty-one renewals of cards, two hundred and forty-two new books were added to the collection, and a hundred and eighty-five books weeded out, and a hundred and ninety-seven patrons took part in programs. In the back room was used twenty-eight out of thirty-one days. The library continues to be a happening place, and I hope you're all checking it out.
All right, thank you. Any other commission reports?
Yes. The Design Review Committee continues to meet almost weekly at this point, and we are working through several documents for our P&amp;Z to be able to use when we have businesses and so forth looking to come and join us. So at this point, we have reviewed... The landscape is what we've already adopted. We're currently going through several documents regarding the ideas behind a historic district and what things we're willing to do there or accept there. We have our historic business district, our downtown district, and then also industrial. So lots of documentation that that committee continues to work on every week. And then the other commission report is the Weezer Economic Development Team. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's what we call it right now. Okay. That one, very briefly met, but they continue to work through the Main Street Program in adopting that and getting that fully fledged. We're very excited about housing them here and the progress that the city has made to allow them to be housed. We also have a conference room that we're able to use for those different conferences and meetings that they need. And we are in the process of looking at sign backings, but we will talk to ITD before we do anything. We're just brainstorming what the back of the signs could look like for now before we bring it up to the people in charge. So they're working on lots of things, and very excited for other things coming to the city.
Okay. Any other commission reports? Are there any committee reports? Okay, next up is department reports. Natasha?
City Weezer Department reports from March of 2024. So Weezer Police Department had forty-one adult arrests, thirty-six misdemeanor, and five felony. The juveniles were behaved again. Citations issued with seventy-nine, misdemeanor twenty-seven, and infractions fifty-two. Calls for service were four hundred and seventy-four, case reports sixty-four, felony five, misdemeanor thirty-five, accident six, and incident seventeen. City Weezer Animal Control, dog complaints was twenty. There was nine impounded dogs, four returned to owner, two adopted, one transferred out. Sixteen cat complaints, fifteen impounded. The Feral Cat TNR Program dealt with thirteen cats this month and one wildlife. City Weezer Ordnance Complaints, there was four abandoned vehicles, two parking, five VIN inspections, one traffic hazard, and one storage container. Waste Water Department's March flow for 2023 was thirty-one million, seven hundred and eighty thousand. March flow for 2024 was twenty-nine million, nine hundred and ten thousand. March average daily was nine hundred and thirty thousand. Projects they worked on this month were ran the belt press, hauled a hundred and forty-one tons of biosolids to Clay Peak, took down number-two clarifier to inspect metal and paint. They took Aeration Basin down to inspect the seals and diffusers. The Water Department, water production for March of 2023 was thirteen point five-one million gallons. March for 2024 was thirteen point seven-five million gallons. The Water Department prepped and painted floor for riverbank pump house, alum containment basin, high-service pump, and the generator room floor. They also sprayed the layer property for invasive weeds. The Electric Department's power consumption for February of 2023 was four million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-five kilowatt. February of 2024 was four million, seven hundred and four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six kilowatt. The Electric Department continued work in the new subdivisions, wired the CTs and tested voltage on new fifteen-hundred KVA transformer for Treasure Valley Farms, and continued tree trimming along our electrical system around town. The Street Department ran the sweeper for seven days. They graded some problem alleys. They started spraying street and curb lines for weeds. They did miscellaneous shop work, and they started working on the sidewalk at the north end covered area of Memorial Park. The Rep Department, co-ed volleyball is well on its way with five teams participating, currently taking registration for youth baseball. Youth soccer is up and running. Youth track is scheduled for June. Volleyball and cheer both have camps coming up, and they are still planning a youth golf, the Youth Golf with Joe. Building Department issued nine building permits this month, seven being single-family dwellings, one commercial building, one dwelling alteration or addition. Mayor and City Council, that concludes your department reports for March of 2024.
Okay, next up is a view of the minutes for our March 12 meeting. You all received a copy of that. Does anyone have any additions or... Chair would accept a motion to approve the minutes as distributed to you.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the minutes of the previous meeting. I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to go through and make a motion to approve the bills that were reviewed by the Finance Committee and present them to the Treasurer and have warrants drawn for the payment and have the mayor sign it.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Do we have to roll call the bills?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Von Breghorst?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
All right. Next up is... There's no unfinished business, other than if anyone has a motion to make so that the mayor will never leave town again during a council meeting? Okay, seeing done, we'll go to new business. First item is approval for bid for contract mowing in the parks. Ron, would you like to give us some background on this?
Ron McGee, Streets and Parks Supervisor. Mike has a lot of the information. We did a cost analysis to see what it would be for the part-time employees, the fuel, the repairs, the replacement cost in our budget. And what we came up with is really close on having someone else do it and take the hit for all of those cost repairs, fuel, workers' comp, all of the things involved. So Mike, like I said, Mike has the numbers that conclude everything there.
So do you think it has... I guess it... This is the first time we've considered something like that. Is something changed in our operation that makes it more cost-effective to consider hiring it out?
It's so efficiency, basically. You all have in front of you a baseball schedule. If you look at the dates on there, there's not very much wiggle room for maintaining the grounds in which those events are taking place. That doesn't include rec baseball, rec softball, the youth co-ed softball, men's league cheer camp tennis, the dog training, farmer's market, soccer leagues, after-school program, kids, swim meets, everyday people enjoying the parks, Spittle Fest. There just... It goes on and on. And basically, for us to mow just one park, the Memorial Park, it takes five days. Each day, the water has to be set in a different place. With that happening, it doesn't give us time between all these different events to do what we need to to maintain properly or efficiently. So what we're saying is, if we have a weather event, then it puts us back a day on mowing, where it takes us to five days. If we get someone contracted in, they can mow that park in one day. That would allow us the leniency of watering whenever we go in between their events.
So then they just have more equipment available?
Yes, more equipment. They have better equipment, where we can mow between two to four miles an hour efficiently. They can mow eight to ten. And quite honestly, that's what they do for a living. You know, it's... We're putting part-time people in the seat of a mower, trying to train them on the job, and expecting them to be proficient in a short amount of time, and it doesn't always work out. So again, the cost analysis says that it's not going to save us a great deal of money, but I think it'll be much more efficient. That way, we can do the rest of the maintenance that needs to be done in the park.
Okay, so do you think we have enough room in the budget to do that?
So this year, the parks was budgeted one-twenty-three, five-eighty-five. If we switched to this and I changed everything, and I left it pretty conservative, I mean, the way we did it, so I didn't change a whole lot, just the employee cost itself, and some of the fuel prices, we kind of just figured it minus out of there. It dropped it to one-eighteen, one-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, five-sixty-six. So budget-wise, it does look like it will save some money. We don't know employee costs. This was based off last year's employee pay schedule. We all know what the economy's doing with pay, so trying to hire part-time people, the cost is going up effectively. And I didn't schedule that against this, so to know what the actual difference would be, I just went with what we had and changed it over. So even with that, we're still, you know, we're coming in four thousand under what we're budgeted. And I assume it's going to be more than that because we, you know, like I said, I didn't know how much gas, how much repairs, all that stuff. And then, you know, we're getting lawn mowers are broke. I mean, we just spent a thousand dollars fixing one lawnmower.
That's been down for six months.
Yeah. And the replacement lawnmower we'd be looking at in the next year is roughly thirty thousand dollars. So, you know, when they have the equipment to do this, it's definitely cost-effective and way more efficient.
Okay, so this is a one... Is this one-year contract? Is that correct? Is this something you see as continuing?
If the...
If it works out?
If the price stays equivalent, yes. But with that being said, we would not get rid of any of the fleet of mowers that we have now. We would maintain them. There's a second mowing that happens on the football field per the school, I guess. The mowing bid would not include that. We would mow that ourselves the second time. There are a couple other properties, the pond just north of the old Park Street Market. We maintain that, and then there's some property that's by the vet clinic on commercial that we maintain the side of that. So we would still need our equipment. And the bid also does not include any weed eating. We have a full-time person that's in the parks during the park season. They would take care of that and all of the cleaning for the bathrooms and things like that.
I assume in the contract will there be some shared responsibility if they break a sprinkler head or things like that? Yes. Or is that something that we're... We have room in the budget so that if a mower hits one of our sprinkler heads?
Right.
We do have room in the budget. I left all that in there, just...
So...
Because that stuff happens with...
Happens with...
Arm mowers, kids.
Aluminum bats.
Right, yeah, lots of... Yeah.
I did not change the maintenance part of the budget.
Okay, so we did.
Until we get a year under our belt, so I can actually see what the budget comes out, it's really hard to estimate within, you know, exact. Like I said, all I did was change the employee cost at this end, change some fuel and a little bit of the maintenance for the mowers. But as far as the parks maintenance and grounds goes, we left it the same.
Okay.
And you're asking... We're asking to approve for the complete lawn maintenance, not just... Or the mowing only?
Just the mowing only.
Okay.
The total's on the bottom. I kind of scribbled on the bottom. I didn't realize it'd be up there, the thirty-nine thousand, four-fifty is for just the mowing for the season, which we rolled into the season.
And then what about including Heritage Park, Times Square Park?
That's in... That's in that cost, yes.
That's in that cost, okay.
The eight-twenty-five, so it was sixteen-fifty for those two, plus the thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred, which came out of thirty-nine thousand.
That does not include Veterans Park, because we're being told that if we were to accept this bid, Veterans would be pummeled.
I did see that in there. That was very nice. Yeah.
Okay, so we are not looking at the lawn maintenance, just the mowing?
Just the mowing, yes. We have a full-time guy that'll do the bathrooms, the weeding, spraying the weeds.
Okay.
All of the things will be taken care of. It's the mowing on the whole that puts us behind.
So on the quote that you guys have in your packet?
Yes, yeah.
There is what it would be if we had them do all the maintenance of the park when it comes to weed eating, mowing, and everything? And then there's a second section that is just mowing only for 2024?
Mowing and blow-off only, not trim edge.
Yep. So that down is what we're asking.
Okay. Okay.
Just to be transparent, we've gotten bids from other people.
We did.
And this is the lowest, most cost-effective one for us.
So where this is for the city, I tried to stay in town as much as possible, and there's very few people that could handle this size. The one bid we have, the other one declined the bid. I did go to another larger lawn service out of town, and it was significantly more.
Right.
Almost double.
So this is keeping it one-hundred percent local?
But they wouldn't do just mowing. They had to do the way, weeding and that, so they wouldn't do what we're asking for.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Then if there's any issues, you get to manage all that, Ron? Or how does that?
Sure.
He already does.
He already does. Same stuff, different day.
Less of a hassle this time, I'm sure.
Perfect.
Okay, so Mike and Natasha, so what you're asking for is approval?
To approve the 2024 mowing-only bid from Eden Lawn Care.
Okay, will there be some kind of contract then?
Yes.
Okay.
So you have to approve the mayor to sign.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're approving the bid and authorizing the mayor to sign?
Yes.
The final agreement?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the contract with Eden Lawn Service for mowing only at thirty-seven thousand, eight-hundred, plus the two additional parks, Heritage Park and Times Square Park, for a total of thirty-nine thousand, four-fifty, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Several roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Von Breghorst?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, guys. Thank you. All right, next. Is approval and authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation for April as fair housing month? And I believe there's a proclamation to be read.
Better we go ahead and read it.
Would you like me to read it?
Sure. Take it away.
Fair Housing Month proclamation. Whereas April 2024 marks the fifty-sixth anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and whereas the Idaho Humane Rights Commission Act has prohibited discrimination in housing since nineteen sixty-nine, and whereas equal opportunity for all, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, and national origin, is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city, and whereas equal access to housing is an important component of this goal, as fundamental as the right to equal education and employment, and whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability, and whereas housing choice impacts our children's access to education, our ability to seek and retain employment options, the cultural benefits we enjoy, the extent of our exposure to crime and drugs, and the quality of healthcare we receive in emergencies, and whereas the laws of this nation and our state seek to ensure such equality of choice for all transactions, including housing, and whereas ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are key in raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities, and whereas only through continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all Idahoans can barriers to fair housing be removed. Now, therefore, I, Randall Hibbert, Mayor of City of Weezer, do hereby proclaim April 2024 to be Fair Housing Month.
Well done.
I motion that we accept. Well, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the...
Approved.
And authorize the mayor to sign. Is that correct? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Next is approval of policies for veterans preference, employee recruitment, work hours and compensation, employee rehire, employee training and development, jury duty benefit, and medical benefit policies. How it will go about this is if there are any of those that anyone would like to vote on separately, we can do that. And otherwise, we'll just vote on approval, all the remaining ones. So to begin with, I would like to vote on the employee recruitment policy separately. Does anyone else want one to... Want or more to be done separately? Okay, so the... If you refer to that document... Okay, has everybody got it? If you go to section... Section two I says... It's on the second page, it's family members. And item one gives a definition of what an immediate family member is. And I would like to move that we insert the word sibling in addition to being a parent, grandparent, spouse, partner, grandchild, child, cousin, niece, nephew, aunt, or uncle. I just... I think that was just an oversight.
Yeah.
Brother or sister is obviously an immediate family member.
Do you like him or not?
Yep.
Good luck.
So would anyone like to second that?
I would second the addition of adding sibling into... Unless there was a specific reason it was left.
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
I agree. I think it needs to be added. And remember, even if we can always pass these with just minor...
Correction.
Yeah. As long as it's not changing the context of the policy itself, we can approve them and still make changes.
Perfect.
Okay, so...
So Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve that employee recruitment policy as corrected.
I would second that.
Who's it?
Mark said.
Recruit...
Employee recruitment.
Yes.
Do they have numbers or anything?
No, they're just listed.
Okay, so we have a motion seconded on the floor to approve the policy for employee recruitment. Any further discussion? Do we need to roll call this?
No.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Now, we would like to consider approval of the veterans preference policy, work hours and compensation policy, employee rehire policy, employee training and development policy, jury duty benefit, and medical benefit policy. Is there any discussion, or do I have a motion?
I'd like to motion that we move forward and approve the remaining policies presented to us.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That motion passes. Is approval of ordinance twelve sixty-nine, backflow cross-connection update, and approve the mayor to sign. It's ordinance number twelve sixty-nine, ordinance of the City of Weezer and Idaho Municipal Corporation, amending Title VII, Chapter Four of the Weezer Municipal Code by amending section seven four two by clarifying certain definitions related to cross connections and backflow devices, amending section seven four four related to backflow prevention requirements, amending seven four five related to providing for separability, providing for codification, providing for publication by summary, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number twelve sixty-nine onto a third and final reading by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to read by title only.
I would roll call that.
Roll call.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Blackwell?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Von Breghorst?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
So I will now read ordinance twelve sixty-nine by title only, an ordinance of the City of Weezer and Idaho Municipal Corporation, amending Title VII, Chapter Four of the Weezer Municipal Code by amending section seven dash four dash two by clarifying certain definitions related to cross connections and backflow devices, amending section seven dash four dash four related to backflow prevention requirements, amending seven dash four dash five related to providing for separability, providing for codification, providing for publication by summary, and providing for an effective date. So Bill, if you want to go ahead and go over some of the highlights of it?
We don't really need to go ahead unless you have questions. Basically, the legislature changed the backflow ordinance for the state of Idaho five, six years ago, and we're just updating our ordinance to match those changes. This is the point of this change. But if you have any particular questions?
Okay, so is this pretty much rewriting that whole section?
It is not too many changes. It's just a few...
Oh, I see, okay.
You can see where it's lined out, and yeah.
Okay.
Few things taken out, few things added.
Yep.
Okay.
It's pretty straightforward, and it goes with the state code as it is written now.
Okay. So we can secede from the state of Idaho?
If you want. You have the power right now.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we approve ordinance twelve sixty-nine, backflow cross-contamination update, and authorize the mayor to sign action item.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Von Breghorst?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is approval of the McGready special use request. And Mike, can you give us some background on that?
So I'm filling in for Dave here, so bear with me. So yeah, after reviewing this, I know after talking to Dave, the special use request is for a piece of property to build a house on that is in a space that, as far as we can tell, cannot be farmed at this time. It's kind of a hill. It's not real level. City water is...
this time. It's kind of a hill. It's not real level. Um, city water is available to that lot. I verified that with Bill, and we went through all that. Guess I don't really know what else we need. I, I can't see that being anything else with homes all the way around. It just kind of makes sense that that would be status quo for that, that property in that place.
Right. As, as I recall from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, it's, it, that, this very same thing is being done all around it, and, uh, uh, there's no irrigation to it, so.
No, thick and firm, it's.
Although it is, uh, zoned ag in the, in the county, that, that probably isn't a reasonable use anymore.
I, I don't believe so, no. Especially with, you know, you got tractors running with houses all the way around. Now it's kind of becoming more of a residential area anyway. I mean, it's kind of gone that way with the houses to the north of it, and then there's one to the west. And I believe there's another one coming in on the northeast side of it as we speak. I just, yeah, I, I would agree that approving a special use for that property or recommending a critical for the county is the way to go with that.
So just to clarify, we're, we're making a recommendation, uh, to the, is it the Planning and Zoning Commission, or the commissioners, or both?
I believe to the county, planning and zoning and commissioners, both, yes.
Okay, so that, that would be our, our, uh, uh, our motion is to.
To make the recommendation.
Make a recommendation one way or the other, uh, to the, uh, plant, uh, Washington County Planning and Zoning Commission and the Washington County Commissioners.
Yep.
So is there any, any further discussion?
I, I, our P and Z did a great job, I think, in reviewing, and all of the recommendations said that based on the reason why we shouldn't approve. That's what I agree.
Okay, and anyone else?
You got it, Mark. Let's do it.
Oh, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we, uh, make a recommendation to the Washington County Planning and Zoning and the commissioners to approve the McGready's special use request.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Do we have to roll call this as well?
Uh, no.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Uh, that motion passes. Okay. Next up is the Harvest Festival request to use, uh, to use city property. Natasha?
So I'm gonna ask Patrick Noman to come up and, uh, give this presentation.
Where, where is Patrick? I don't see him.
Don't you want to read that?
I'm gonna leave it to you. Take it away.
Mayor and council, good evening. I wore my proper attire tonight.
Thank you.
You're up.
I feel like I can hear you now.
That's good. Glad.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be hiding in the back. Uh, so I, I come to you tonight because, uh, recently I was made aware of, uh, some folks, uh, the gentlemen that own Second Chance out on Highway ninety-five who have put on the Fall Bazaar for the last sixteen years, on their property have elected to no longer do that bizarre, um, effective this, starting this year, citing especially safety concerns along the Highway ninety-five corridor, uh, with parking issues and those kind of things. Uh, and it's just kind of outgrown their facility. They have usually seventy vendors, uh, with a waitlist of anywhere from thirty to fifty vendors that they cannot accommodate, uh, in order to get into that show. Todd Davies brought this to my attention about three, four weeks ago, that, uh, they were not gonna be able to do that any longer, and it took me probably about fifteen minutes to say, well, sure, why not? Why don't I do it? So, um, I come to you today to ask for permission to be able to move that event that's been basically in our community already, but move it into downtown, uh, and on, keep- keeping the same dates, October fourth and fifth, uh, rebranding it as the Harvest Bazaar, um, and kind of trying to bring back a version of the Harvest Festival that used to be in town. It is the same weekend as Mud Dragons, um, and so it will, it already has something else going on with, with that weekend, and I've actually already been approached by somebody that would like to plan a fun run for that weekend as well, too. And I have plans in visiting with other local business owners about doing barn dances or those kind of things as well. Um, and then the way that I have kind of designed the, uh, barn dances, um, also known as a hoedown. Um, uh, so the, the way that I have designed that would be able to put the booths down through the center of the street, leaving the sidewalks, uh, available for businesses to run sidewalk sales and, and access into all of the businesses. Uh, I foresee that after Mike's help figuring out exactly how much room I have on each city block, that we're going to need for sure, two blocks, uh, with potentially an overflow into the third block. And that's why I come tonight to ask for permission to be able to close off the streets, uh, from Court Street all the way to Commercial, but yet leaving each individual Main Thoroughfare accessible. So that'll leave Court Street, Main Street, Idaho, and Commercial all available to traffic. We'll just block off from the inside of the crosswalks on each, on each one, which will then also give us ample, maybe not ample parking, but more parking around the depot and subsequent areas there for the community to be able to park and for people to travel in. Uh, and then I'm also working on other ideas for, for additional parking lots, um, as well, to be able to accommodate that traffic. So. And I might add that I already have people calling to request booth space. I've already started the waitlist for booth space. Um, and I have, I have visited with every single business on all three blocks that that will, uh, that that will affect, and I actually have signatures from every single business that will, uh, that will be on that. I do have two businesses that unfortunately have only been able to give me a verbal, uh, so far, because both of those representatives are out of town and won't be back in town until later this week, but they've said that they'll come sign the paper as soon as they're back in town at the end of the week. So that gives me a signature then by Friday of every business on that three-block stretch, so.
Very exciting.
Very.
Yeah.
I'd like it to be a test run for permanent closure. We can make our own eighth street. Use it right here in Weezer. If you read the minutes from the Main Street meeting, you know that's one of my dreams. So, um, but, and by the way, that's Economic Development Task Force.
Oh, Task Force.
But just.
I looked at Mike. He didn't correct me.
So, I know. That's okay.
That's true.
But, so it would, it would effectively close off those three blocks, uh, and give me the availability. If we close off all three blocks, I'm actually on the third block between Court and, uh, and Main would probably only utilize about half of that block, uh, in order to put booths in and keep the other half open. Uh, my intention is to talk to Rizonis or someone to put on a barn dance, um, in the other half of that block on Friday night. So, uh, and I've already visited with, part of the reason for that is because people's furniture would like to leave that alley accessible for delivery trucks and, and those kind of things, because Friday is a heavy delivery day for them, so that would leave that available to them. That should allow me to put in about a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen vendor booths, uh, in those two and a half blocks. So. Okay.
Is there any for power?
Nope.
Nothing like that?
Nope.
Okay.
Everybody will be self-contained. Um, I am not going to bring in or recruit food trucks, because I would like them and encourage them to.
Local vendors.
To use local places to eat. There's plenty of places to eat within walking distance. Um, I know one that I can recommend right off the top of my head. Um, but, uh, Dude's Kitchen is amazing. Um, uh, and then, um, I've also visited with Jennifer Huff about Farmer's Market, and we're going to, uh, try to encourage as many of the folks from the Farmer's Market. The Farmer's Market will end probably about a week before, but we're going to try to include as many of the folks from the Farmer's Market to plan another additional week to include them into the vendors as well, too, so that we'll have another kind of final farewell for the, for the Farmer's Market as well, so.
So Troy, do you see any issues with this? I kind of spoke with the chief a little bit this morning, but do you have any concerns? Questions?
Lieutenant Troy Crum, Weezer Police Department? No, the police department doesn't have any concerns, other than leaving the streets open's a great idea. I would recommend putting temporary stop signs where there's no traffic control. Other than that, no issues.
So you're talking about Commercial? Like stopping them at that.
Commercial.
Oh, no, no. Of course.
That would be about it.
Does that.
Oh, Court has it already.
So, are the one-way streets aren't, are they like state highway, right? Does that pose a problem for us to put temporary stop signs on them?
Yeah, I'd probably have to discuss that with I T E. I.
So the only one that would be in question would be Idaho. Idaho's the only one that.
And it's a one-way, so you're talking.
Because Main already has the stoplights. The stoplight.
Commercial, no.
Right.
Commercial's not a state highway.
Commercial, we can do. Idaho is the only one in the world. So one-way, it'd only be, we'd stop signs one, the side going one. I mean, it wouldn't be too big a deal, and I, I'll, I'll discuss that with I T E. I don't think they'll have a problem with that as a temporary.
I wouldn't think so either, but the, the, that potential for that amount of pedestrian traffic.
Yeah.
We, we can definitely verify that.
Is that, we definitely won't have the manpower to, uh, patrol that and, and run, um, pedestrian traffic back and forth on those streets.
Especially with other events going on in town, because we haven't, like, talked this yet.
So does, does it require on, on our streets, does it require, uh, council action to, uh, to install the, the stop signs, or is that just something that can be done administratively?
We can do that administratively.
Okay.
And the only reason this is coming before council, um, is because there will be vendors on the street. If you were just closing off the street for, and, and it's a new event. So it wouldn't even be something that needed to come to council year after year, kind of like the, the Rock the Park. Once it's approved, it's approved. But anytime there's a new event that has vendors selling on city property, it has to come before council.
Okay, all right. So if later down the road we want to reconsider, do we have any, um, way to do that?
Absolutely. You could just say this can't happen again next year without changes or, you know, something different. You can, you can do that, yeah.
Okay.
October fourth and fifth.
Um, so what, uh, uh, Fire Department, did, were, have they been consulted, or they?
We usually just make sure when we set everything up that they have a fire lane, which I think is, Ron, you might correct me, eighteen feet wide or sixteen feet wide. Fire lane going through the center to allow fire access is all they require. Um, some of the vendors, if they're cooking, will be required to be inspected by the Fire Department to have fire extinguishers and.
I love that. Okay.
And I don't think he's gonna.
But he's not having any food vendors, so that would take them out of that except for the travel through the lane.
Okay. All right. Any more questions?
I'd like to motion that we approve and authorize the mayor, oh, sorry, excuse me. I'd like to motion that we approve the Harvest Festival request for use of city property.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a, a motion and a second. Um, all of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion passes. Thank you.
Put it on your calendar, October fourth and.
Next, next thing is approval and authorization for the mayor to sign administrative contract for the park grant. Natasha, can you give us some?
I'm actually gonna let Mike.
Okay.
So what this contract breaks down is when you get grants through federal, you have to have a licensed grant administrator to run the grant and make sure that all the, uh, I's are dotted and T's are crossed as far as wages, uh, materials used and whatnot. So, um, Region Four is the one that takes care of those. They actually submitted the grant for us and has worked through this with us. Uh, this just says that we will pay them rest of their money as due when, um, as the grant goes on.
Okay, is this a, a normal cost?
This is, y- yeah, so I've only done one other one of these, and, and it was relatively the same cost. Um, this one has a lot into it where we have to meet so many rules and regulations for the, the federal money through this. Um, so far they, they've done a really good job of staying in contact. This is actually out to bid as we speak. Uh, we've had a couple people interested in it, too, so, um, the grant does cover quite a bit of this. Uh, a lot of it can come out of the grant. We use some of the Blue Cross money to cover the difference if there is. Uh, it's looking like, we're hoping they come in low enough that it covers it all, but we are budgeted and funded for it.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Except, uh, a motion?
It was very exciting that we got the grant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign the administrative grant for the park grant.
I'll second.
We have a third, actually.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Does this require a roll call? Okay?
Um, I would, just on the safe side, I would, like Mike said, just because it has to do with money.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Chipman?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Von Brethorne?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'm sorry, I keep forgetting that part.
I motion Weezer.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Nick?
I would have.